Today is Monday, March twenty seventh. The time is seven thirteen and I call this meeting to order. Counselor Flores is going to give our invocation tonight, so if everybody would stand and please stay standing for the pledge of allegiance.
God be in our minds as we begin our work tonight. Be in our understanding as we seek to serve. Be in our eyes that we may see the needs of our community. Be in our thoughts that we speak with charity and with wisdom. Be in our ears that we may listen to and hear the words of others. Be in our hearts that love and justice may guide our decisions. Be in our hands that we may build a community where all are cared for. God be our wisdom, our guide, our hope, so that all we do, we do in love of you. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, to the Holy Spirit, to one nation, to God.
Hey, roll call.
Larry Tensio.
Here.
Dennis Flores.
Here.
Heather Graham.
Here.
Regina Mastry.
Sarah Martinez.
Here.
Vicente Martinez Ortega.
Excuse.
Lori Winner.
Here.
Okay, we have four recognitions tonight, and our first one we have is for the Pueblo Child Advocacy Center for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Ladies want to come up? Okay, proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month, April twenty twenty-three. Whereas in two thousand twenty-one, four million maltreatment referral reports were received in the United States. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every single segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input, action, and collaboration from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Pueblo. And whereas child abuse can have a long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and development well-being of children. And whereas effective child, children abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, medical, mental health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas, prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, we, the City Council, the City of Pueblo, Colorado, by the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month. The City of Pueblo, Colorado, will urge all of its citizens and community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts by recognizing the signs of child abuse and reporting suspected child abuse to allow for our children to live a life without fear. In witness wherefore, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city, Pueblo, Colorado, to be affixed this first day of April twenty twenty-three. Congratulations.
If you have a couple of things you wanted to say, I know you have April as your big fundraiser for.
Yeah, I'd like to thank City Council for your continued support in our effort to eradicate child abuse in our community. We're proud to kick off our April campaign. It's a beautiful month to protect children. We are asking our community members to join in this effort. And you can join in this effort by being aware of the signs of child abuse, reporting those signs of child abuse, but more importantly, listening to children. Oftentimes, they'll only disclose one time, and we, as a community, we must be listening. So we ask you, not only during the month of April, but every day. We know it's a beautiful day, every day, to protect the children in our community. And we thank you, City Council, again, and all of our community supporters. And hopefully, one day, we won't be standing up here and that we can honestly say that Pueblo is free of child abuse. Thank you.
We have just some little merch for you, just the signs that you stand against child abuse. And then just a bag of cookies.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Okay, next up, we are gonna recognize the Human Relations Commission, so I know we have several people here tonight for that, so if you guys want to come up. Okay, is that everybody? Okay, great. So the City Council wanted to recognize you guys for your calendar artists. And I actually have a full stack of calendars over here. If anybody did not get one, I will put them on the back table for the community to take home. They're really cool. So it is with great admiration that the City Council, the City of Pueblo, Colorado hereby officially acknowledges and commend your hard work and creativity on the two thousand twenty-three student art calendar. Each of you has shown great artistic gifts, and we thank you for sharing them with the community. The outstanding talent of each artist was instrumental in the success of this calendar. Your personal contributions of talent, time, and energy are invaluable, resources to Pueblo Human Relations Commissions, and the entire community. We wish all of you the best in your future, and congratulations. And maybe we could just pass this around, and you could tell us your name, and maybe your age, and if you had some artwork in the calendar.
My name's Elizabeth Herzog. I'm seventeen. I had two pictures in it. They were both photographs. One was, I think, trees. And then the other was like mountains. That's about as much as I can say about it, so.
My name's Lila Lucero. I'm dying, and I have two pictures, and one is a guitar and a flower.
Hi, my name's Brandy Mendoza, and I had one picture, and it was of a woman in a galaxy, and it was a painting.
Hi, my name's Adelia Hayes, and I'm a member of the Pueblo Human Relations Commission. I just wanted to take a moment and really appreciate all the artistic efforts that these students shared with us. Again, all the pieces were wonderful. Around six months ago, we put out a call to the entire city of Pueblo. Anyone that was a student K through college that wanted to submit artwork could. And we had many wonderful pieces, and truly, the artwork we got was truly spectacular, and all of you should be very proud of your artistic ability and your creativity, because it's going to take you very far places. I got you guys some certificates. So Elizabeth.
There you go.
Lila. And then Brandy. But once again, these students are truly talented. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then if anybody wants a calendar, they're on the back table, and there's some great artwork in there. And now I'm going to invite Counselor Tensio up to give our third recognition. Oh, are you fourth? Who's third? Mary, you're third? With the ARPA? Oh.
You're right. You're always right.
Week of the Young Child, may I have... There you are. Proclamation, Week of the Young Child, April first through seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the demand for quality childcare continues to escalate as the number of single parents and married couples who participate in the workforce also increases. And statistics indicate that the percentage of mothers with preschool-aged children who will join the workforce is increasingly substantial. And whereas, each day in our community, thousands of working and/or college student parents place their infants and young children, our nation's most precious resource, in the hands of childcare and early childhood education providers. And whereas, early childhood care and education professionals render an invaluable service to families throughout the world and are, as such, responsible for our children's futures, contributing to children's positive lifelong personal, academic, and vocational achievements. And whereas, the Pueblo members of the National Association for the Education of Young Children, N A E Y C, celebrate this occasion with special activities honoring and acknowledging the vast importance of the services early childhood care and education professionals provide, and stressing the need to give our children quality childcare and early childhood education opportunities. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Pueblo, Colorado, and the Board of County Commissioners of the City and County of Pueblo, Colorado, by the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the week of April the first through seventh, two thousand twenty-three, as the Week of the Young Child in the City and County of Pueblo, Colorado, and urge the citizens of the community to join us in the partnership with the Pueblo Early Childhood Council to express our appreciation for all early childhood professionals and their commitment to the care and education of our young children. In witness whereof, we have hereto set our hands and caused the seals of the City and County of Pueblo, Colorado, to be affixed this first day of April twenty twenty-three. Heather Graham, President of the City Council, Garrison M Ortiz, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you so much for everything you guys do to support early childhood in Pueblo. I have a couple of flyers to talk about some of the activities that we are doing in Pueblo. We have the Cherish the Young Child happening on April the sixth at the Pueblo Mall. We have the Week of the Young Child Fun Fair happening April twenty-ninth at City Park. We have the Tree of Life Celebration happening April eighteenth at Mineral Palace Park. And of course, we always have Caramel, the On-Site Mobile Childcare Unit. So those flyers are to announce a little bit of the activities and events that we have going on in Pueblo to support and celebrate young children.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and our last recognition tonight is for the ARPA Task Force Volunteers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the City Council. As you know, the City of Pueblo received thirty-six point seven million dollars in ARPA funds over the last couple of years. And we created a task force of volunteers in this community to make sure we had an equitable and transparent distribution of those ARPA funds. I'm proud to say that about seventy-five members of the community participated in these task forces. And from July twenty twenty-two through November of twenty twenty-two, they evaluated more than two hundred community proposals that were submitted, focused on increasing access to resources, job creation and retention, prioritizing mental health, funding solutions for quality childcare, and enhancing educational opportunities for youth. Those seven pillars that were made up of the volunteers were for individuals and households, tourism and hospitality, youth, nonprofits, small business, infrastructure, and community resilience. It's, the City of Pueblo has gained national recognition for some of the projects that we've funded through our ARPA funding, including the Pueblo City-County Library District Summer Reading Program, Colorado Rural Legal Services Eviction Prevention Program, and Health Solutions Community Responder Program with the Pueblo Police Department. We wanted to take a moment to honor and thank those volunteers. We have several of them with us this evening, and I want to call them up. And if I could get Julia up here, we've got a certificate for them. The others will get their certificates in the mail that weren't able to be here this evening. But if you would come up when I call your name and get your certificate, and then remain up here so we can get a picture at the end. First, Angela Hiron. Angela was the youth pillar lead on the task force. Heather Hankins from Health Solutions. Danielle Kitzman. Danielle was the Tourism and Hospitality pillar lead. Elvis Martinez. Elvis, come on up. Tara Morrow, I don't think is here. Melanie Rapiers not here. Angie Shehorn is here. Angie, come on back up. Derek Stoll. Derek, come on back up. Brandy's not here. Brandy Atticay, no. Or Liz Chapman. Noah Comerford's here. Noah, come on up. Gary Clark's not here. Kathy Javino, I know, is here. And those are the ones that were able to join us this evening. Did everybody get their certificate? Yes? And I've got one final certificate here that I want to present to Julia Cordova. She's been our ARPA coordinator, coordinating these seventy-five individuals, these seven pillars. And this was a massive amount of work, organization, and paper, and meetings to organize. And Julia did a fantastic job throughout this process. So Julia, I want to give you this certificate of recognition. So thanks to all, and you be happy. No, I'm not going to pass the microphone and let everybody write remarks. If we can just get a picture, we'll be done. Thank you all for your service. We really appreciate it. Good to go. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Graham.
Okay, and that concludes our special recognitions tonight. So we're going to start off with public forum, and it looks like we have a couple people signed up after. So I will allow you each to speak three minutes tonight for the people that are past number six. So our first speaker, I think it's Steve Vallejos. You have to sign up, sir. They, they, they put it out at six. It's out at six?
All right.
Okay, well, it's always out at six on the back table, and there's usually a line. So if you follow the line, you'll be able to sign up. That's how. There's a signup sheet in the back. There is. I assure you. We're going to continue on, though, with our public forum, so I will ask you to... I don't recognize you. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, continuing on, Mr. Vallejos. Mike is yours.
Hi. I just came here, you know, just to talk about different things I see around Pueblo, because I drive around here, and I see things that happen. And I seen just a couple of days ago, a family over at the South Side Safeway, you know, they had the rollaway bed there, and a couple of kids and basketball, I guess, the only kind of belongings they can bring. You know, it was just kind of sorrowful seeing anything like that, and then, you know, but it's coming, a common scene, not only in Pueblo, but around the United States. And, you know, what I would like to ask all these people that are homeless is, you know, don't take your flight down to the river bottoms. You know, don't take them where they can't see. Bring them here. Put your tents out here. Let them see what's happening. Don't hide. You've done nothing wrong. Put your tents out in front. They can arrest some of you, but they can't arrest all of you. They ain't got room to put you nowhere, and you ain't done nothing wrong. You just ain't got nowhere to hang your hat. Come and hang it down here, so these people that are supposed to be your representatives can see what you are, to see your flight, your misery, your kids. You know, you ain't done nothing shameful. You just can't afford to pay, you know, out of your low-waist check, half of it, three-quarters of it to rent and to survive. So you go to work every day, trying to find someplace to maybe someone to take care of your kids while you go to work, which you can't do, so you lose your job pretty soon. So, you know, so service to take your kids away is probably a better thing for them, because, you know, what can they do with kids if they can't afford to keep them, or to feed them, or to put a house over there? It's common, but I just asked them, you know, if there's thousands out there, bring it down here, bring it down, pack out here. You know, don't take it downtown with people who own businesses and stuff, because, you know, they're trying to make a living to stay, stay, you know, away from your type of flight. You know, it's miserable to see this kind of things. And, you know, people turn their head to them, but it's not their fault. And it's happening all over, and it's been brewing for a long time. So I just got this little thing I want to read here. This is Housing and Urban Development Study. Found that four-point-nine million unassisted, very-low-income households. This is ten-point-nine million people, three-point-six million, which are children. Now, the same people pro-abortionists, pro-lifers, these are the same people that fight to bring these kids into the world, to bring them in, you know, do everything, you know, even come and try to take over this place for two or three days. You know, no one else can get in here and talk, because they want these kids so bad to live. But once they get here, what do they do? They abandon them. They take away resources. Clear from the federal government. They're trying to do it now. Read in the paper where they want to take assistance away from people who are having this kind of a flight. But they're sure fighting to bring them in, and why? I don't know. You know, maybe because they don't have to look at them. Maybe if they're gonna... I don't know why they, you know, why they fight so hard to bring them in and then abandon them when they get here. And then, you know, I know pretty soon summertime's coming, crime rate goes up during the heat. You know, I'd just like to ask Dennis Flores, where we're at with this, with this feat, put these kids into baseball, you know, because if you don't get them into baseball, I was at the flea market, I seen all these gloves out there, and I was okay. We would have killed for one of those, because we didn't have them, so we used socks in our hands, catch the balls, but all those gloves, each one of those gloves probably going to count for one of those kids having a gun this summer. Why? Because you, I don't know what, what we have to go through to lift that, or what it is, or how many you got to vote on, or the steps to get there, to get these kids into, you know, sports for twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-olds. If they're not going to be in there, they're going to be somewhere, maybe learn how to load a gun, how to pull the trigger, and how to kill. The only thing I'd ask them, if they're going to do that, to go do it up on the hill. No more in the valley, because we've seen too much of it. Maybe if we start taking it up on the hill, they start feeling some of the pain that people down in the valley do. Maybe then they'll say, well, you know, something has to be done, because now it's our kids. It's our kids getting killed. You know, but, you know, it's going to happen. Summertime's coming, and, you know, that's why I asked the wife to ask Dennis Flores, and they gave us a card about scholarships and all this kind of stuff. We don't need scholarships. We need, you know, they're good. But all these parents, all these kids, you know, it's coming, death on the doorstep. You know, I hate to be negative, but I see it. And I don't know what happened to that family. I went back to look at them, to see where they were at, and maybe talk to them, but they were gone. I don't know, maybe... I don't know. But, you know, you guys are responsible. This is your town. People, we vote, let's look at the choices they made, the decisions they made, how they voted on issues. Let's put some people in there that really care, people that want to change.
Thank you, Mr. Vallejos.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, I think it says Dr. Mike.
This is on. Okay. So tonight's my last time coming to City Council. I've been coming since two thousand fifteen, I think, maybe, or certainly early two thousand sixteen, talking about our drug problem, our substance use disorder epidemic. So real quick, I want to first say, SCARA still keeps getting asked about our intentions regarding overdose prevention sites. We keep saying no. Then we get asked again. We've been asked in an accusatory manner. We have been lied about in what our intentions were. But again, I don't know how else to say no, nine, yet. We are not interested, have no intention, have done no planning, don't want to. We have plenty on our plate without it. It's a huge project. We're not doing it. Next thing I want to talk about is, there seems to me, I don't know why, all of a sudden, needle exchanges and harm reduction agencies are under attack. There seems to me to be some wishful thinking, maybe some magical thinking about this topic. We all hate what's happening in our town. I don't think there's any argument about that. I think we all agree. What we're arguing about is strategy on how to deal with it. And I can tell you, you know, the question I ask, one of the questions I have to ask is, how did we get here to this stage where we are? And we are frankly where we are, which we hate, the situation we hate, as a result of a hundred and seven years of treating a medical problem with police. I'm not talking down on our police. I'm not dogging our police. It's just the wrong strategy. This is a medical issue. They're not qualified. We don't ask them to treat hypertension. We don't ask them to treat diabetes. We don't ask them to treat cancer. Why are we asking them to treat this problem? They, in fact, can't treat it. They are having very little impact. If they had an impact, it would take decades to see the impact, and we don't have that kind of time, because people are dying. Ms. Mastry, you waxed very eloquently about the importance of saving lives a couple of months ago. These lives count too, frankly. Last thing I want to quickly bring up is the U.S. Commission Report on Synthetic Opioid Trafficking, Final Report to Congress of two thousand twenty-two. Sarah, you're looking a little blank, if you haven't seen it, I guess. Larry, I've talked about it with Larry. I've talked about it with Dennis. I've talked about it with the mayor. I also talked about it with the Chief of Police and the other law enforcement. I'd like to read you some of the names of the people involved in that. This was authorized by the Defense Funding Act of two thousand twenty. Their charge was to do a deep analysis and arrive at a strategic plan to deal with this. The co-chair of it was Tom Cotton, who is, as everyone knows, is not a liberal pot-smoking hippie type. Also on it were Executive Director of the Appalachia High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, Managing Director and Senior Policy Analysis of Longview Global, former Administrator, Administrator of U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration, Karen Tandy. And all these names, they're all top law enforcement, top drug warrior types. Again, not a bunch of pot-smoking hippie liberals. Technical support was by the RAND Corporation, again, not a liberal hotbed. They spent time first talking about how bad it was, how bad it is, how we got here by, you know, talking about China and Mexico and all those sorts of things. Then they spent some time talking about what they would like to do about it. And then they spent a fair amount of time talking about how difficult, if not impossible, it was to actually do anything about it. And then they reluctantly, sadly, unfortunately, said, we can't stop it. We cannot permanently interdict this by force alone. The best we could manage would be to localize disruptions for short periods of time. And then go on to say in their final recommendations that we need to change what we do at all levels of the society, and had multiple recommendations regarding things like overdose prevention sites, that maybe we ought to look at that and study it, collect data, find out if they work. Talk about community drug checking.
Thank you, Mr. Nuremberg. That concludes your time. Our next.
Thank you.
Here is Mr. Freeman.
Handicap. Give me a break. Let's see, is that gonna show any? There we go. There we go. Okay. Hey. Good evening. The redirection of the one-half cent percent in used tax for quality of life projects and why the tax is no longer important as it was in the past has been created or presented to the city council. Now we need to look at the return on investment the people Pueblo receives from their special tax. There does not appear a formula to determine the incentive companies are offered for locating a new business in Pueblo or adding new employees to an existing business. The process of recruiting companies to add primary jobs starts with Pedco by one, find a potential prospect. Two, vet the prospect. Three, negotiate incentives, terms and conditions versus number of new employees, so forth. From the information gathered from the prospect and an application, application is filled out and submitted to the mayor. In turn, the mayor scorches the application to the legal department that writes a formal employment agreement that includes the negotiated Pedco and Prospect Terms and Conditions. The city council then most frequently approves the employment agreement. I wanted you to note, Pedco is not authorized to negotiate anything to the city. The incentive offered as a company should be determined by how well it has been vetted and the one-half percent sales and use tax available. Vetting includes history, product and services, profitability, competition, marketing, distribution, and three or five-year business plans. If standards are not met during the vetting process, the company should not be considered. The uncommitted amount of one-half percent sales and use tax deposited in the sales and use tax capital improvement fund is given to Pueblo monthly, so they know how much they have to go to negotiate with. The problem with the vetting process and the excess use of the one-half cent sales and use tax only, are only two of the reasons why so many of the employment agreements have failed to meet the expectations of the citizens of Pueblo. I will be presenting more problems with the economic development system and the city's budget in the near future. To place on the ballots the redirecting of the one-half percent sales and use tax for quality of life projects, citizens must get involved. Volunteers are needed to form working committees, organize efforts to raise funds, publicize activities or events, work with government departments, create a website, write ballot initiative document, recruit a signature collection team. And I'm looking for people that are willing to work hard in the improvement of project, the quality of life for the people of Pueblo. And I put up here my webs, my email address. And if you would like to help, please give me a write me a note at my email and I will send you copies of all the documents that I have and the documents I will be creating in the future. Okay? And I thank you very much and you all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Okay, next we have Rebecca Robles.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Rebecca Robles. I'm here to speak. We're here to speak about taking down the Columbus statue and March is Women's History Month. And so you see two indigenous women sitting before you to explain why you must take down the Columbus statue because Columbus and his statue represent the legacy of white supremacy and the issue of missing and murdered indigenous women that started with him, with the church and with the colonizers continues today. And at the state level, we have a bureau to solve the cases of the missing and murdered indigenous relatives and a report conducted at two universities and published by the Office of Justice Program shows indigenous Americans face drastically higher rates of violence than their white counterparts with homicide and sexual violence impacting American Indian and Alaska Native women more than any demographic in the country. The murder rate for Native American women is 10 times higher than the national average when compared to all other ethnicities, according to the Boulder-based nonprofit Native Women's Wilderness. So that's the connection between the statue, which represents a false narrative, a Eurocentric narrative that perpetuates white supremacy and Women's History Month, which is this month. And so now I'm gonna pass it to Deborah. She's gonna continue reading from our book, Lies My Teacher Told Me About Columbus.
Ethnicities. We are here to read from the book Lies My Teacher Told Me About Christopher Columbus, written by James Lowen. We read to educate council and community that Columbus is not a hero. Instead, he, he represents the genocide of indigenous people and is the father of the transatlantic slave trade. I will pick up with our reading with, the last reader was just getting to talk about the Afro Phoenicians. And so we probably will start with the Eurocentric histories omit the possibility of Afro Phoenicians. African Americans who present positive facts about African history and positive images of African Americans get accused of teaching Afrocentric history. Some white historians oppose Afrocentrism. Arthur M. Schlessinger Jr. denounced it as psychotherapy for blacks, a one-sided attempt to make African Americans feel good about themselves. Unfortunately, the regular history in our textbooks has been Eurocentric. So is this psychotherapy for whites? Why do textbooks leave out the possibility of Afro Phoenicians? Textbook authors are Eurocentric. They believe that most important developments in world history came from Europe. As Samuel Marble put it, "The possibility of African discovery of America has never been a tempting one for American historians." White historians continue to resist demands from African Americans for histories that include the accomplishments of black people. They argue that the case for the Afro Phoenicians hasn't been proven. We must distort history to improve black children's self-images. They're right in saying that the case hasn't been proven, but textbooks should include the Afro Phoenicians as a possibility, a controversy, of course. Our discussion of archaeology already noted that history books aren't good at controversies or conflict. They seem to have to teach the right answers, even when no sure answer exists. Textbooks don't include Vasco de Gama just because something came from his discovery. However, they include him because he was white. Only one book, the American people admits this. It calls him the first European to sail around Cape of Africa. The rest call him the first person. Furthermore, all the textbooks heroify de Gama. That is, they present him as a, in a gee whiz tone that tells us he was great and we are to think well of him. As with Columbus, authors never tell what de Gama did with India. Once he reached it, in fact, de Gama's journeys like Columbus.
Ms. Espinoza, I'm gonna stop you right there, just so everyone knows that you're the next person speaking. So they'll, your five minutes over.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, continue.
Thank you.
No, you can, you can continue. I just, you have five separate minutes. I just wanted everybody to know that you're our next speaker.
Oh. I see. Okay, thank you. Like the Spaniards, the Portuguese denied the humanity of non-Christians to Muslims in particular. They did anything they wanted. Here is a detail from de Gama's second trip to India in 1506, written by Gaspar Correa, a Portuguese historian who came to live in India about six years later. De Gama's ships had just finished shelling Calicut over a disagreement with its ruler when about 20 moorish ships and sandbooks arrived at the port. The caravals went to them and the moors could not fly as they were laden and the caravals brought them to de Gama. He then ordered the boats to go and plunder the small vessels, which were 16, and the two ships in which they found rice and many jars of butter and many bales of stuffs. Then de Gama commanded them to cut off the hands and ears and noses of all the crews and put all that into one small vessel. When all the Indians had been thus done to, he ordered their feet to be tied together as they had no hands with which to untie them. And in order that they should not untie them with their teeth, he ordered them to strike upon their teeth with staves and they knocked them down their throats. And they put thus onboard, heaped up upon the top of each other, mixed up with the blood which streamed from them. And he ordered mats and dry leaves to be spread over them and the sails to be set for the shore and the vessel set on fire. And there were more than 800 moors and the small vessels with the friars with all the hands and ears was also sent onshore under sail without being fired. These vessels went at once onshore where many people flocked together to put out the fire and draw out those they found alive upon which they made great lamentations. No wonder the famous South African musician Hugh Masekela recorded an anti-colonist song with the frame, "Vasco de Gama was no friend of mine." Consider another famous explorer, Hernando de Soto. Two pages after de Gama, Life and Liberty tells us that de Soto discovered the Mississippi River. Actually, ancestors of the Native Americans, Americans who later chased him down the river had discovered it and named it Mississippi. De Soto's discovery led to no trade, no white settlement. His, his was merely the first white face to gaze upon the Mississippi River. That's why 18 of the 22 U.S. history books, textbooks include him. Actually, de Soto's sojourn did have one tragic result. His soldiers gave the natives diseases that cut their population in what is now the southeastern United States to one-tenth its former number. Even by the time the cell floated down the Mississippi 140 years later, this epidemic left native populations much reduced. Among our 22 textbooks, only Life and Liberty mentions this plague and Life and Liberty gives it just five words. So watch out, even after the improvements wrought by the protests and scholarships around 1992, textbooks still don't give the whole truth. The exploits of many explorers from de Soto to Perry at the North Pole to the first man on the moon didn't lead to much. Our hypothetical, our appalling results of the explorations, a boatload of hands and ears, a devastating plague are left out. So we can admire the courage of our white predecessors. West Africans versus Irish explorers. We can explore the Eurocentrism of our textbooks if we examine what they say about some explorers in Table One. On purpose or by accident, you can't see Table One. People may have come to America from the west coast of Ireland around 600 A.D. and from the west coast of Africa around 1380. Let's compare the evidence for each of these voyages, then contrast them with what the textbooks say about them. Moderately good evidence suggests that West Africans reached the Caribbean and Brazil in the 1300s. When Columbus reached Haiti, the Arawaks gave him some spear points made of guanine. The Indians said they got them from black traders who came from the south.
Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. That concludes.
Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Dave De Chenzou.
A chance. So I'm gonna give him a couple of minutes. Um, no, no, not yet. My turn first. Thank you. So I did want to spoke, speak a minute about N9, which is an ordinance fixing the monthly salaries of the members and president of the city council at $1,418, respectfully. It's well deserved. I think there should be an ordinance that limits the mayor's salary to three times the president's salary or some other thing that's related to the president's salary. So that's, that's a separate thing. I wanted to talk about demographics tonight, demographics of the city. And we heard about demographics in the last speakers and, and I think that the narrative about taking down the statue is a backward-looking narrative. It isn't a positive, forward-going narrative. It's not trying to improve the life of anyone. It's a negative thing, trying to change the life of people who support and have maintained that statue for 105 years. So that's about that. But the demographics that I want to talk to is the makeup of our city's population. We heard a little earlier about older people not getting internet or not having internet or not access to internet and maybe needing some, some training. I've been knocking on a lot of doors and I can tell you, there are a lot of old people who are single, living at home, no internet connection, maybe not even a newspaper connection. And so we've got to do something about that particular problem. I don't know what it will be. But it's, it's just a fraud. I asked them, do you need me to bring you anything? And they always say no. So I don't know if they have families that help them, but they're very frail. We had to wait longer if we knew it was an old person in order to let them get up out of their chair and get into their walker and get to, get to the door. So it was, it was quite revealing. And I think these houses are 1960s built on the old airport. They're gonna need renovation and that's something that maybe we need to, to help our young people. I think the goal of the city should be to maintain and retract, we, we retain our young families. We saw one earlier today. She got a prize. Those are the kind of people that we need to keep here and maybe they commute to the springs to get their good job and I got more to say about that, but I'm gonna give Pablo some time. You ready?
Okay. I wanted to talk about utility rates, about them being too high, about Comcast, about the rest of them, about Excel, about the rest of them being too high. And I want you to appoint a service committee to study the problem. And I want you to appoint a service committee to study the problem. All right? I'm an old folk. I'm an old guy. I'm retired from the chieftain after seventeen years, twelve years at the post, blah, blah, blah. All right, and I what I wanted to do now that I'm on a fixed income is cut down my costs. And one of the highest costs is the utilities, utility rates. The Comcast, the Excel, the Exxon, the, all the rest of them, all the rest of them, water bill. They're too high. They're too high. I can't believe you haven't heard it yet. That they're cutting into the senior budget. You know, it's really cutting into the senior budget. And I'm here to testify that that's happening to me. I mean, the average bill now from public services coming in at ninety-three bucks a month. And cheap Comcast is a hundred and eighty, you know? How, how, how they get away with that? How do they get away with that? You can bring down the hammer on them. You can cut them off at the knees. You can make them charge less. And you can do it. Or, or I'm going to run for council. One of the two, and it'll be in that large seat. Right? And my sole platform will be exactly how much the, the, council has done about franchise utility rates.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pablo. Your time is up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, and then our next speakers were, after the sign-up sheets, we're going to allow them three minutes. And our first is Ron Petty, wanting to speak about District Two Safety.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to say thank you to you all for the job that you do. Larry, thanks for coming out to our district. You've come out several times. You got beat up this last time because we're kind of getting frustrated out there. We came to ask for a few things that'll probably cost money. Stop signs, maybe do a study to, you know, Glendale from Fourth to the park, it's kind of like a drag strip, okay? So stop sign, maybe a street light at Glendale, any things that, number of things that cost money. Now, I'd kind of like to say something that won't cost money. That would really help us. Now prostitution's a problem. Drug usage is a problem. Drug sales are a problem. All these things are problems there. And you don't necessarily have to fix each one of those problems. You can fix one big problem that won't cost a dime, and that is just enforce the existing law. People cannot go down to the riverwalk and put up a tent and do drugs on the grass, I don't believe. It may be allowed now, I don't know. It's certainly allowed on the east side. I don't really see it on the north side. I don't see it much on the west side. Now, why the east side it's allowed? I'm not real sure. The homeless camps have been there for quite some time. And when you allow behaviors or subsidize them, you're going to get more of that behavior. So allowing these homeless camps, the, I mean, I feel for the homeless. I've been homeless. I've dealt with homeless people, worked with them and whatnot. And some people, they kind of want to be homeless, the ones that fall through the cracks with the families, with whatever, they get the help. They go to social services, they get off the streets. But there's a big element out there, especially on the east side there, and want to get off the streets. Some of them are even on social security, whatever, they're on disability. I'm on social security. My wife's on disability. She's going to be retiring here just real soon. And we can relate. This is not an easy problem to fix. I'm not asking you to fix the problem. I'm asking you to enforce the current laws. I sometimes wonder, do I need to go down to the riverwalk, put up a tent and have some needles scattered around, just to see what happens? If we don't allow it there, please, let's not allow it on the east side. We're not a dumping ground, you know? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Ronald, the next speaker?
Thank you. My name is Randolph Carrillo. We're the East Side Neighborhood Watch. East Side has been neglected for a long time, but the East Side Neighborhood Watch Group has gathered together thirty homeowners and well-to-do people that are taking responsibility for our own community. In only six months within our inception and a little effort, many people have noticed a difference. Motion creates emotion. When the neighborhood sees that the city's working on the Lower East Side and making improvements, even as simple as a neighborhood watch sign or a stop, or stop signs, or a streetlights, this builds morale within our community and gives our community a sense of pride and ownership and influences them to make their own improvements. So we're asking for stop signs. As Ron was saying, there's, they use Joplin, Glendale, Fountain and Hudson as drag strips up and down the street. We have lots of new families moving in, buying homes, renovating the homes, walking their dogs down these streets trying to access and use the Plaza Verde Park. So it's very dangerous. We also have child daycare centers there. So it's dangerous for, you know, the, the speed that the people are drag racing up and down the street. So we're asking for stop signs on Glendale, Third, Second, and First Street facing north and south, also Hudson and Joplin and Fountain. And a light on Fourth and Glendale. So to help, you know, the neighborhood, like I was saying, it's not just the lights and the stop signs. It's the action that's being taken place within that community. The people see it happening. It kind of chases, chases away the people that are not looking to, they're, they're looking to do, I call them males, right? You know, drugs, right? Prostitution, as Ron was, Ron had mentioned, right? And just by action, being, the city taking action within the community, it, you know, it helps us. So we're just asking for the stop signs and, oh yes, the dilapidated houses. There's burnt down houses where the drugs, drug addicts go in to do their needles, do their heroin and whatever else, their prostitution in there. So we'd like to, we're asking for some help with the burned down houses and the abandoned homes. That's it.
Thank you all so much. Our next speaker is Omar Maldonado. You left, okay. And we have one person on Zoom, Jacqueline Bernal.
Thank you. It's Bernal.
Bernal.
So, yeah, thank you. I wanted to speak in support of the Southern Colorado Harm Reduction Association. Sorry, my camera's not working. But, so I was watching the last city council meeting and it really sounds like maybe some of you have not been touched by addiction. And it was really just discouraging to hear your point of views. It was very dehumanizing to anyone who has suffered from addiction or who loves someone who has suffered from addiction. The Harm Reduction Center is definitely something the city should be investing in. We know Harm Reduction Center is going to be doing so much more for the community, but it seems like the big hangup here is going to be the needle exchange and recoveries. A big thing that was brought up was children being brought in during that day when that is happening. So I reached out to the community via Facebook group. I went out and talked to people. And the big group of people I was trying to talk to was children of addicts, the adult children of addicts. And I heard some stories, you know, about like when children going into liquor stores with their parents, being in cars with their parents drunk. A lot of them were about alcohol more so, and that makes sense. I mean, Pueblo has more, what I think is like more bars and liquor stores per capita than almost any other city in the United States. But that's okay because, you know, liquor stores now even carry suckers because it's common for children to be brought in there. So I don't want to see how you're okay with that, but you're not okay with a child going in where parents are receiving healthcare because harm reduction and syringe service programs are healthcare. While they're in there getting those services, you know, they're being offered different types of recovery programs, medication. The children, if they are with them, are getting eyes on them. People, you know, there are healthcare professionals who are required by state law to report if there is some sort of neglect or abuse going on. So, you know, with the syringe system, if you talk to any addict, they're going to tell you the first step to recovery is admitting that you have a problem. And the second step is admitting that you need help. That's by walking into that building. They're taking that first and second step. So, I mean, if you really want to clean up Pueblo, why would you want to be an obstacle in their path of recovery? Like, can you imagine what it'd be like if liquor stores and bars handed out recovery packets with every stack? Or you go into a bar and they're like, here's our shot list. Oh, here's also a list of AA meetings. No, but that's something that this place is doing. It's going to clean up Pueblo. People who go into that are five times more likely.
Okay, that concludes our public forum. We'll start off with Mary and Council commentary. Mary, do you want to start us off?
Thank you, Madam President and members of the city council. I want to begin by talking about a couple of items that are on the agenda for first reading tonight. The first is N six, which is Lights On for Safety. You'll recall this is the ARPA grant that we're making to Crime Stoppers. And let me tell you how this came about and how this number was arrived at. Black Hills Energy approached us wanting to know, they have two hundred thousand dollars that they're going to put in this program, wanting to know if we would match it. Lights On for Safety is designed to provide an energy audit to businesses and also a lighting audit and assist those businesses with lights and cameras if that's what their choice is. So we reviewed it internally and obviously I think we've had presentations here before and have, the internal ARPA committee has recommended that two hundred thousand dollars. And I know there's been some discussion on council about, should it be more than two hundred thousand? I'm certainly not opposed to that, but I would suggest that we start at two hundred thousand, which is to match Black Hills Energy. And if it turns out that there's a bigger demand for that among the business community, we can certainly come back to you and say, let's put some more money in it from ARPA. So that was the first thing I wanted to mention. Second thing is N eight. And I want to mention this because I've been talking about it in the community and the people have been calling the mayor's office. But N eight is the ordinance that will allow the city of Pueblo to sell liens on fifteen vacant properties in the city of Pueblo. So for those who are listening at home, if you get on the council's agenda, you'll be able to see a list of those properties that will be made available if the city council passes this ordinance on second reading. We expect that it will pass. And if it does, we expect that the first auction of these liens will open up on May the sixteenth. And it'll be open for five days and people will be able to bid online for, for these liens. So we are excited to roll this program out. I think it's taken longer than we wanted. You recall that this vacant property ordinance was passed in two thousand and one. And so this, it's taken us this long to get in a position where we can put the liens on the property, give notice to everybody. We'll advertise these properties in the paper for thirty days, but we expect that the sale will open up on the sixteenth of May. But people who are interested can go right now to the city's website and the council's agenda. And if they click on this document on item N eight, they'll see the list of properties that will be the first ones whose liens will be sold by the city. Finally, I want to let you know that April one through thirty is the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation Month. And we sent out a press release today. I'm joining mayors from across the country who are asking residents to make a commitment to long-term improvement to reduce pollution and manage water resources more wisely. In return for that, patient or residents can register to win over fifty thousand dollars in eco-friendly prizes, including perhaps, Mr. Moore has already left, but three thousand dollars towards their home utility payments, water-saving fixtures and hundreds of other items. Last year, mayors in two thousand cities encouraged their citizens to join this challenge. And they pledged to reduce their annual consumption of fresh water by a billion gallons of water, reduce waste sent to landfills by thirty-five million pounds and prevented nearly one hundred thousand pounds of hazardous waste from entering our watersheds. So this will allow residents who take this pledge to conserve water will help them save money on their water bill. It'll help save infrastructure and operating costs as a city. And it'll promote drought resiliency and protect watersheds and ecosystems. So for residents that are interested in participating in this challenge, go to mywaterpledge.com. If you go to mywaterpledge.com, you can sign up to participate in the challenge. And there'll be prizes awarded to individuals who are able to save the most amount of water and to those cities that get the most number of citizens registered on a proportion of their population. So we're hoping that the citizens of Pueblo will join in this by going to mywaterpledge.com, signing up, identifying yourself as a resident of the city of Pueblo and participate in the activities for the month of April designed to help us all conserve water. The Board of Water Works is cooperating with us on this endeavor. Even though their business is selling water, they understand the long-term sustainability of conserving water and are joining us in this effort. So that concludes my remarks this evening.
I had a question, Mary, on six thirteen and six fifteen east, a list of houses. We had received an email from Urban Renewal Authority and those were two lots that they had been trying to get from the city for, it said three years in the email. Is that true or is, can we just give the lots to Urban Renewal for redevelopment or how does that work?
Which lots you talking about? They're not the lots on the list for the liens to be sold. These are vacant lots?
Six thirteen and six fifteen East First Street.
They're on the list? I'm not aware that Urban Renewal requested those lots if they're on the list. Urban Renewal has requested some lots that we, they want the city to give to them. Those lots are encumbered by federal obligations and they're required to put affordable housing on those lots.
But these aren't two of them that they had asked for?
These are not, these are not vacant properties. I mean, they're vacant properties, but they're not bare lots. They have structures on them.
Okay.
So they're not, they're not.
I, I might have it confused, but I thought that an email came across today.
I didn't see an email today.
No, and they were inquiring about them, so, okay.
We have been talking with Urban Renewal because they have an opportunity to put some indie dwell homes on some lots. I know they're looking for lots there. And what we're awaiting from Urban Renewal and from the owner of the homes is some language that would restrict the rental or sale of these properties in a manner that would comply with our obligations under um, the rental or sale of these properties in a manner that would comply with our obligations under uh federal law, because these properties were acquired with federal funds, and we have an obligation to make sure that those properties remain affordable housing. So if we get language to that effect, we can do that. Otherwise, I think some funds can be paid to release it from that, but at this point, at least, they haven't said they'd like to do that.
Yeah, uh, this, this, it's definitely those two lots, and it looks like it went to you as well, but I'll forward it to you too.
Okay.
See you again. Yeah, I'll send it to you as well. But I just, I just wanted to see where we were with them. Okay, does that, is that all?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the um, Eastiters who came to speak during public forum. I know that takes a lot of courage, so thank you for um showing up. And it seems like our Public Works Department Director is already on the case for stop signs, so that's a um, seems like a very reasonable and feasible ask. Um, this past weekend, President Graham and I were in Washington DC attending the Congressional League of Cities Conference um, where we attended several sessions about retaining and recruiting more police officers, ARPA funds. Um, I went to a couple about affordable housing. Um, and there seems to be some really great funds that are gonna be available at the federal level coming down, especially when it comes to affordable housing. So um, I'm very excited at that opportunity. We also met with our Colorado delegation members um, to really advocate for Pueblo because their federal budget is in the process of being formed right now. And um, so we were really heavily pushing funding Pueblo, fu- funding Southern Colorado. Um, and um, our voices were heard in terms of that budget process. So um, I think that was a great win. I also attended the Rawlings renovation ribbon cutting last ceremony last um week. It's a beautiful building. Um, if you haven't gotten the chance to go inside of it yet, it's gorgeous. Um, and what I didn't know is that not only do they have a seed library where you can actually check out where, but it's not really checkout. You just get the seeds and then go for like, you know, growing your own fruits and vegetables and trees and things, but they also have a tool library. So if you have a tool that you need, you actually can just go check it out from the library now. Um, and they have state-of-the-art um, community meeting rooms, because I know that was a, a need identified by nonprofits a couple months ago. They have state-of-the-art meeting rooms, technology, zooming, um, a whole bunch of, a whole suite of things for meetings. Um, so congratulations to the Public City County Library District. Um, the building is beautiful.
Counselor Tenzio?
Yeah, I want to thank the group that came in from the Lower East Side. I met with them on Saturday. We had quite a spirited meeting. Uh, you can imagine a lot of Barrio speak at that meeting. It wasn't kind and it wasn't gentle. I got beat up pretty good, which is okay. But I also emphasize to them that I, as a city councilman, can't make things happen. I need the support of the community, and if they band together, then I can further their their, their asks. That's where I come in. I told them, you don't want me coming into the neighborhood and telling you what to do. I need you to tell me what to do. And that goes for every neighborhood and every constituent in the city in that we, we work for you. You're our boss. You tell us what to do and how to do things. And uh, we're literally obligated to do that. In terms of the uh, the uh vacant uh properties and the liens, the only concern I have is that I, I would hate for well-to-do speculators to come in and buy up these liens and end up, especially landlords who are less than you know, I don't know the word I want to use, but uh use, just use up the properties and rent them out. One of the things that came out in this meeting that we had on Saturday was that they don't want to see any more rental houses down on the Lower East Side, that what they need is uh owners uh occupied homes. And we need to inf- infill that uh neighborhood with people who are invested in the neighborhood through homeownership. And that's the only thing I have. That's my only reservation in terms of these liens, because the people who can afford to buy the liens and to go through all the trouble, they're not gonna go down there and live. They're just gonna go down there and invest and buy up those places and end up renting them out. Ten years from now, they'll be just as dilapidated as they are now, and we've done nothing to help the neighborhoods. So that's the only reservation I have.
Counselor Forrest?
I have nothing to say.
Counselor Mastry?
I'm glad Mr. Moore got the opportunity to speak. You know, I get a lot of calls from the seniors when it comes to utility bills here in our city. And um, you know, um, some are in fixed incomes and they do have assistance with LEAP and so forth. And some have retired it where they don't qualify for that program, but their quality of life is, their retirement is going to their utility bills. They've retired to pay utility bills. I know a lady that um, she, her electric, because she's um, has a electric heater, is six hundred dollars a month. And her income's about three thousand a month. And um, she qualified for a little program that reduced her utility rates, and it was a four dollar discount on a six hundred dollar bill. So um, you know, we're going around trying to take care of people that don't have internet, but we have people that are just needing the basic needs of heat and electricity. And um, they're suffering here in our community. So as a council, if we can do something different, um, you know, I, I'm no, these people aren't gonna live until we go on a full grid of uh wind, windmills and um and solar panels. And so there's gotta be something that um, we can do to ease the hardship of basic necessity utilities here in our community. I mean, this has kind of gotten a little out of hand. Um, and it's not just one person. It's many people are calling and um, talking about that. So uh I know that this council has been through utility issues before. Um, and whatever we have to do to address it again, you know, but you know, at it's almost like putting our finger in the dyke, you know, we've got people starving, so we do food banks, and we got people without um, uh internet, and yet we've got people that are freezing and eating probably whatever, just to, just to try to make it. And um, we just have a lot of, our, our, our we're hurting um, as a community, lack of housing, high utilities. I know we had that thing about the sales tax in the um, paper today, and they said that the biggest revenue generating was from XL Energy. So um, you know, because the utility and inflation has gone up um, in so many aspects, and that's why the sales tax revenue is going up. It's because the inflation is going up. So um, I'm just glad that Mr. Moore had an opportunity to state that because that's what's going on. And um, let's just look for, pray for better days. Thank you.
Counselor Winner?
Thank you. Um, um, I would like to elaborate a little bit more on what Regina had mentioned, and um, you know, as we all know that um Comcast has a franchise fee as well as the other utility companies. Um, and I mean, just if, if we could just drop those franchise fees, that might help us a little bit anyway. Um, I did have a question for, for um, the mayor. On these liens, all they're doing is purchasing liens. They're not getting the property. So have you foreclosed on these, on these, on these, on these homes? Does the city own these homes?
No, the city does not own the homes. The documents make it clear. We're not selling the homes. What we're selling are the liens.
Right, so they're, they're not, nobody's getting the house. They're just paying for liens. That's all they're doing.
They're paying for the lien, and then they have the right to foreclose the lien.
Right, they have the right, the right to foreclose the lien. But how, that takes like five years or something.
Absolutely not.
Okay, how long does it take?
Six months, seven months, depending on each one will be different. But it, it'll be that period of time. It's not like a tax lien where you have to wait for three years before you get a deed. If you get an ag- aggressive person, they'll be able to foreclose that lien very quickly.
So the homes that are sitting out there now, we have quite a few folks that do pay taxes every year. And they're never, they're never applying for a deed because they don't want responsibility of the property. You know, just like the city doesn't want, want, want responsibility, the property. So these people that pay the liens don't want responsibility either. I mean, we have that one house that uh, Beulah and Mesa, um, the guy that's been paying that taxes for several years. A lot of these have been, otherwise there, there would have been a tax cell a long time ago.
That's a vacant property. That's a vacant property. I can't tell you whether we have a lien on that or not for the property tax, or whether they've registered as a vacant property. Recall that this vacant property ordinance doesn't say you can't leave the property vacant. What it says is if you're gonna leave the property vacant, you have to register it with the city.
I get that, but you also have abatement liens on all of these um, homes as well, besides your vacant property lien.
Some of them we do.
All you're doing is selling a tax lien.
So we're not selling a tax lien. We're selling liens on the property. Some of them are abatement liens, some
Well, municipal liens are tax liens. All municipal liens are tax liens, or they're high priority liens.
If we certify them to the assessor, that's true.
Yes.
But yeah, no, we're not selling the property. What we're selling
So if there's a lien, then it's certi- then it's certified as a tax lien. They're due at tax time. All I'm saying is that um, you're not selling the property, you're just selling the lien. So these, these homes could sit there a while.
And the documents make it
Like Larry had mentioned.
The documents make it clear that we're not selling the property, we're selling the liens.
Right. Do we have, do we have any sideboard boards on that where um, they're required to apply for a deed in a certain amount of time?
No.
And this is what Larry was just talking about.
Well, they can keep the property vacant if they want to, as long as they pay the fee. Uh, if they don't pay the fee, then we're gonna sell the lien to somebody else, and they run
Exactly, so they don't own the property is what I was getting at.
But
So can we, can we put some sideboards on that, that um, they have to file for a deed in, in uh, six months to two years or some kind of sideboard?
You can't do that, no.
So, why isn't, why is, okay, so, so why isn't the city foreclosing on the lead and taking possession so that we can actually sell the property?
Well, we don't have the staff to do it in the legal department, number one. We felt like the private sector will be much more efficient and effective in foreclosing these properties and getting them back into productive use.
Applying for, applying for deeds.
And the city. We, we felt like the private sector would, is much better equipped to acquire title to the property and rehabilitate the property than the city is.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's why we went through this process.
Okay, all right. I just didn't uh want anybody to think that uh we were selling property because
The documents make it clear.
Okay, um, I just have two, uh, two announcements coming up. Saturday, April fifteenth at nine AM um, is the Great American Cleanup along the Arkansas River Corridor. So there'll be people down there, the friends of the Arkansas River will be down there cleaning up, and we'll have um gloves and trash bags and neighbors to help clean up. And so everybody put that on your calendar. Who wants to pick up trash for two weeks? And then the next uh, meeting coming up is this Thursday at six PM. There'll be a um, community meeting being put on by the police department, and it'll be at Zeragoza Hall at six PM, and it's open to all residents and all businesses. I'm not sure who the speakers will be or who will, who will be in attendance, but it's their uh quarterly community meeting, so I would encourage uh, business owners and residents to come and hear from the police department. And then, um, so speaking of the police department, we had, you know, some people here from the east side tonight talking about enforcement. And truly, the problem with the enforcement is we do not have enough police officers on the street to enforce it. We barely have enough police officers to be reactive, um, let alone proactive in, in what they're doing. And that is becoming a huge problem in the community. And our jobs up here, our number one job is enforcement and support of public safety. I've said it tons of times, we're down fifty officers, still down fifty officers, and it's, it's really wearing on our police department uh, so much that the police union has um, come to the city council, come to several of us and met individually. They met with the mayor's office today about recruitment and retention. They put a survey out about recruitment and retention and what they're hearing and seeing in other um, cities and, you know, what they, their advice to us and what we can do. Um, the officers are not happy with the number of calls that they're receiving. Um, it's, it's much more significant than it is in any other community, which is really affecting the police morale and the police officer's quality of life, and um proactive policing is just not happening. Um, so what, what they came to us for, and they're gonna be here on April twenty-fourth with the whole meeting to the rest of the council um, who has not seen the presentation yet, um, they're asking for a ten percent pay increase and a quarter master system to um, incentivize people to come to Pueblo and work for our police department, and also for us to keep the police officers that we already have. Um, a ten percent is a little less than two million dollars a year. Um, and that's also with the, the quarter system. I, I'm pretty sure I've asked for that several times now, and I have not received um, the quarter master. Is that done? Is it, where are we with that? Okay, um, we, we need that. Um, and so again, they'll be here to um, present on it, but I want the council to know what's coming, and uh, you know, I'm in full support, and I know several of their counselors are about a ten percent pay increase. Um, and having their quarter master system, which is having their uniforms paid for. The police union does not go into negotiations till next year. And the city of Pueblo cannot afford to wait till next year to recruit and retain. Where we have, I know of at least seven officers who are looking to possibly leave, which will put us down even further. And so I'm asking the council to consider um, a ten percent pay increase and the quarter master system um, for, for the police officers that we have to retain the officers we have, and to also have a recruitment tool to, to go out into the other communities. When we were just in the um, DC, they did a um a meeting about, you know, public safety and, and several um, police departments all over the United States are shorthanded. But what they said is you have to make your police department unique to draw people into your police department. We don't have a whole lot making our police department unique. There are some of the lowest paid officers up and down the front range. They have to pay for their uniforms, and there's just not really anything appetizing um, for a police officer to come work into Pueblo as the other cities on the front range. So again, they'll be here the twenty-fourth um, with the ten percent ask. And they do not want to go into negotiations because there's a lot to deal with negotiations, other things that they wanna talk about. So it would be, you know, the council authorizing a ten percent increase and also having um, their uniforms paid for. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I'm not sure who's met with the union already and who hasn't met with the union, but that is what their ask is gonna be. And I, I mean, I seriously think the council needs to take action on this because we will not have the enforcement that we need on our own streets. Um, it's a war zone out there. I mean, last night, the east side again was um traumatized with uh car theft and um, several officers having to track down suspects and drag them out of a house. And so we need uh proactive police work, and we can't have proactive police work if we don't have the, the officers to do so. Um, so the union is coming here to present. They have a PowerPoint. Um, I met with them, Sarah's met with them, Counselor Tenzio's met with them, the mayor's met with them today. Um, you can reach out to them, and I'm sure that they would offer a, a private meeting, and if not, they're gonna come present their survey um, and their comments and what they've, what, what the professionals think that we should be doing for retention and recruitment within the city and what we can do. So we're gonna go um, page by page. So page one, um, page two, page three. Um, I would like to pull in six and postpone it until April twenty-fourth. I think that there's some language in the background um, information that's just not quite there yet. Um, just for instance, the qualified locations of everybody receiving the grant needs to be in the census tract. I don't think that that's something that Black Hills can dictate on who, what customers they serve and don't serve. I know we haven't seen the application yet. Um, and we haven't got any more information on this since last time, so I'd just like to postpone it until we can get a little bit more information.
May I please confirm April twenty-fourth or April tenth?
Um, let's the tenth give us two, two meetings?
The next, it's the next um, formal meeting.
Do you think that this stuff can be
Madam President, we don't have a work session on April third. So in order for time, and just because I'm assuming we'll have to work it out in work session. So in order for time and just because I'm assuming we'll have to work it out in work session, I would prefer April 24th.
So if we can postpone that first reading till April 24th.
And then, Councilor, are you requesting a second work session?
Um, not, well, I think there's just, you know, confusion when they came, not all the council was here. I think it was just Counselor Flores, myself and Counselor Martinez or Counselor Maestri. And I just don't think that we got all the questions answered we needed. I know I wanted to allocate some more funds to it, which I'm not seeing in reflection here. And I have some issues with some of the things listed in the small business eligibility. I mean, even the fact that the the qualifying business is going to be able to select their contractor, that doesn't seem like that was what was said to begin with. And so I just think that we need some cleanup. So if we need to have a work session, so be it. But if not, I want to postpone it till April 24th.
One more time clarification, yes to scheduling a work session or simply first reading on April 24th?
Can I make a call? We are postponing this. This is only the first reading. We can get this information in the next two weeks, can't we?
Yes.
Yeah. So why postpone? I mean, this is a postponement by first reading.
We're sure we can have this information and an application because we haven't even seen the application and we don't even know how people apply. Or none of that's been told to the council yet, so.
If you'd like to see the application attached to the ordinance, we can do that. The clarification of the census tract was confirmed earlier this evening in an email that using ARPA dollars, the 200,000 from the city must go to businesses in the census tract. And the agreement and the sub recipient agreement is not with Black Hills Energy. So Black Hills Energy can do their portion of the 200,000 or the 400,000. Then the Crime Stoppers can, those can be awarded wherever in the city. But the 200,000 coming from ARPA, those have to go to businesses in the census tract.
Do you have two different applications then for census tract and non-census tract? Or how are we going to get this information out to?
The application will so state it, but also the review committee will keep track of the dollars in a spreadsheet. But it can go either way. You know what? We can actually get the application to you in advance for review.
But it's not done yet.
The draft is done, but only a draft.
Okay.
We were not ready to go out with it at all until we went through, till city council formally approved.
Okay. I just, I know there was a press release that was written and the council hasn't received any more information on any of this. The amounts are incorrect and the eligibility is, you know, all over the place. So, I mean, I'd like to postpone it till the 24th, if that's acceptable.
The Crime Stoppers really are taking over all the responsibilities, aren't they? I mean, we're, can you explain the sub recipient agreement, Dan?
Yeah, we're going to make a distinction between businesses and qualified census tracts. We can use ARPA funds for those businesses. And so we'll have to have each application reviewed by Crime Stoppers or those inside QCTs and those outside QCTs. We don't dictate how Black Hills spends its money. Black Hills can spend money outside eligible qualified census tracts. It's just that the city match, in order to comply with ARPA, the business must be in a qualified census tract.
That doesn't mean that the 200,000, the Black Hills can, they can give money outside the qualified census.
Absolutely.
They can, but that's not what your background information states. It states must have a physical location in a qualified census tract of the city of Pueblo.
For the 200,000.
It doesn't state anything about 200, 400 or anything above. I'm just asking for clarification so that people know when they're applying to this, that where they need to apply, is there two different applications?
This only applies to ARPA funds and only applies to the 200,000.
Okay. Well. Yeah, I'd still like it postponed until it's cleaned up. Okay. Anything else on?
Oh. President Graham?
I would like eight, I'd like a work session on your ordinance in seven. And I would like that. So what I would like to see is, you know, we put ordinances in place and like you said, it is the mayor's first and foremost duty in the first paragraph of the charter that he enforce the ordinances, him and his administration. I want to see a commitment from his administration that they will be enforcing this ordinance once we have it in place, so that the community understands we have ordinances in place that cover a lot of the things that everyone is upset about, but they're not being enforced. That way, it's not all put back on you if there isn't any enforcement once your ordinance passes. And so I'd like to see from the mayor, I'd like to see from the chief of police and the court.
The judge.
And the judge. And then also, we'd like to. Well, I'm not finished. I'd like to see from the sheriff's department that they are going to be accepting these because we are lacking that contract with the county jail. Because if we don't have beds available and the municipal court judge doesn't want to send them to a county like up in Buena Vista or something, then it starts to tip the scale on the justice for those being charged.
I mean, I did all my due diligence before and I talked to all the stakeholders involved and we're clear across the board. But if the council wants to see, then I think that we can make that happen.
Let them commit to the community that they're going to do that.
Wouldn't they do that?
Well, because that, because they're not, we're not enforcing things now. Like, a lot of times, we don't enforce no trespass and we don't enforce littering when we're standing, when someone's sitting there with trash all around them in an encampment. And we're not enforcing the things that just normal ordinances that we have in place, we lack enforcement now.
There's a clear definition of what ordinances are and the responsibility of our police officers.
No, there isn't.
Yeah, there is.
Because they're not enforcing them. I've seen people, they go and they're defecating in public. Are we enforcing that? Are we enforcing the littering in public? Because when you're sitting there.
You want to embarrass, you want to embarrass or?
No, I don't. What I.
It sounds like you just want to.
You know, I'm not going to argue with you.
I don't think it's so much about enforcement. This is just about the term of how much time that they face after. There is nothing set right now. And so if you are going in and robbing a store and stealing $300 worth of merchandise, nothing's happening, but that doesn't mean it's not being enforced. They may be getting arrested.
Understand what it means. Let the community understand what it means.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want to. Just another grandstanding situation.
It's not a grandstanding. It is not. It is educating.
Ms. Martinez?
Madam President, just looking at the work session schedule, given that April 3rd is canceled, the next work session would be April 10th, in which case this would be the second reading of the ordinance.
Let's leave it open for discussion so that the community understands and they have an expectation of what this means.
Counselor Maestri, then, are you suggesting that we have the work session on April 10th for, before the second reading? So we're not pulling anything from this agenda?
Fine. It is better for the community to understand what this means. And that way it sets their expectations. They're not over, because we get the calls when things aren't enforced.
So you don't want to pull it? We'll pass it tonight if it passes and then we'll have the work session.
Yeah, I would like a discussion so the community understands exactly what this ordinance means.
Okay. We're not pulling it. We can do that. Okay. Anything on page four, anybody? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Well, I motioned to amend the agenda, postponing item N6 through 4/24.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Okay, reading and approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to dispense the minutes?
I motioned to dispense with the reading and approve the minutes of the regular meeting dated March 13, 2023 as distributed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Passes 6-0. Public hearing.
Okay, public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony as it pertains to the assessment of cost of demolition and removal of dangerous buildings and other structures upon land located at 1608 Washbun, Wash Avenue and 1103 East 8th Street.
Okay, at this time, I will open the hearing for any public testimony. There, anybody?
You have something?
Okay.
Madam President, members of council. So this is a process we don't do very often, but it is one that's required by code and relates to the recovery of costs that the city has incurred for demolition of dangerous buildings in the city. So tonight, we're going to have hearings related to two different properties at 1608 Wabash and 1103 East 8th Street. I just want to take just a moment to just kind of refresh council's memory on the process related to the demolitions here. So where we are in this step, let's back up. I guess the uniform code for the abatement of dangerous buildings is the code that outlines this process. It outlines the process from the moment a dangerous building is identified and condemned by Pueblo Regional Building Department through the processes of appeal and hearings gives property owners the opportunity to respond to condemnation notices orders. When those property owners are not responsive to those orders, the cases are then referred to the city. And so in these cases, when they're referred to the city, the city will perform the demolition and abatement work or repair. And ultimately, we're in the last phase of the process here where we are now recovering costs for properties where demolition work was done. The code requires, for instance, that we maintain an account of all the expenses incurred that I bring to you after the completion of the demolition, a report of demolition. And that we have this public hearing then to receive public testimony. So there's two real purposes to this. One is for me to bring this report of demolition and two for anybody interested, interested parties to come forward with public testimony related to the demolition costs and the assessment thereof. There is no vote required at the end of this hearing. There are two items on your agenda tonight, two proposed ordinances that will assess the costs or that will be presented to you to assess the costs related to the demolitions. So that's items R5 and R6 on the agenda tonight. If you have in front of you the reports of demolition for the two properties, I'll just go straight into it. The first property in question is at 1608 Wabash. The demolition work on that property was completed in February 22 and the scope of work involved environmental assessment and sampling, removal of utilities, demolition and asbestos abatement costs. The total cost for assessment for demolition of that property and turning it back into a bare lot was $56,272.23. The owner at the time that the work was done, the owner at the time that the condemnation order was recorded is the same owner who owns the property today. My recommendation to the council is that we do assess the costs in full for this property. Second property in question is 1103 East 8th Street. This demolition work was completed in December of 2021. The environmental assessment and sampling work, removal of utilities and demolition and asbestos abatement costs were all incurred by the city in a total amount of $36,609.99. Again, just as with the last property, the same owner who owned the property at the time of condemnation all the way through the process of demolition and up to this moment is the same. So again, my recommendation for this case is to assess the costs in full. That concludes my report demolition and I will take any questions you have.
Any questions? Okay, and is there anybody? Oh, Counselor Tensio?
So this will be a lien on the property. So this will result in an assessment of a lien on the property, correct? It's not going to be filed as a tax lien, but it would be filed as an assessment against the property. That's great.
I saw one that was 40,000, one on East 8th Street was $40,000?
The one on East 8th Street was $36,609.99. The other one was 56,272.23 cents.
I guess my question is what incentivizes a person to buy these liens? The property itself is probably worth less than half of it.
So the city does have options related to how it handles those assessments. The city can, again, foreclose on those liens, it can sell those liens. There are a number of options on the table for the city to be able to, you know, get the property back to highest investors.
It just seems.
Part of.
I don't know how many people are going to go out there and buy a $36,000 lien on the property and then foreclose on it.
Sure. I sense that some of your question is about what is the value we're getting out of the money we're spending here? And remember that we are removing blighted property. So there is value to the adjacent property owners in doing that. It is definitely not a revenue generating proposition here. We are spending taxpayer dollars to clean up a private mess. And ultimately, it results in a better neighborhood for everybody. That's one of the benefits.
Understood, but.
But the cost is.
It's hard for somebody to pay that lien and try to acquire that property. Can they possibly just wait it out and pay the property taxes on it and foreclose on the property taxes later?
And remember, I guess this lien won't, this lien won't be assessed on property tax bills, right? This is going to be just an assessment on the property. So, I mean, it's going to be there until it's either removed or settled.
Oh, Counselor Maestri?
Mr. Hayes, it will be in addition to if there are any property tax bills.
That's great.
Property tax bills plus this lien.
This assessment would be separate from any other kind of lien that would be filed, right? So if the city had a weed or a weed abatement or a trash abatement lien, those would be separate. Those are typically handled a little bit differently. These are much larger in value though, so they're handled a little bit differently. And they have a separate, the Dangerous Buildings Abatement Code has specific processes and therefore how the liens are assessed.
Yes, so somebody could already own property tax liens on it if there are property tax.
It is possible. There might be previously filed liens ahead of ours, but.
And then this lien also. So it's not just this lien, it could be multiple.
Counselor Flores?
Yeah, I don't have a quest, I have one question, but I also have a concern and that has to do with the insurance requirements that the city has for all contractors. We have to make sure that we have environmental liability, which is different than the regular liability that we usually ask our contractors. So we want to specify that anybody that's involved in this demolition provides us with, you know, the adequate insurance that includes environmental liability.
If your question is about our contractors, the city's contractors for performing the work?
City's, you know, insurance requirement.
Right.
The demand, because a lot of these general, polish a house don't have, they don't all have environmental liability. Because under the general liability policy, it's excluded. I just want to make sure that when you get to that point of entering to a contract with these people, that they provide that or add that on there.
So we do comply with all the state requirements relative to the type of work that's being done. It's just straight demolition work. If we've tested, for instance, and there's no asbestos on the site, we would just have a general demolition contract. But if there's asbestos that needs to be abated or other hazardous material, those contractors have to be qualified to do so. And there are Colorado regulations related to those and including establishing, you know, experience and credential requirements, insurance, other things as well.
Requires license.
Yes, sir.
All I care about is that the city is protected with a request of having environmental liability coverage. That's all, that's all I want.
Understood.
And the property on East 8th that you'll be demolishing, I, you know, I'm on urban renewal and we, I think, have some correspondence. They showed interest in building, using that lot to build something on it, so. You know, I think that is something that urban renewal, that law, they would be interested in buying.
Sure. And another, another point about this process. At the end of the assessment, the property owners still own that property until something is done with the lien. So these are not city-owned properties. There's just a city lien on those properties for this amount. The city has options on how to handle those liens, but they are, this does not result in city ownership directly.
Any other questions for Mr. Hayes? Okay, at this time, I'll open the hearing for any public testimony. Anybody would like to testify? Nobody who wants to testify, so at this time, I will close this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
L consent agenda, M resolutions, item M one, a resolution awarding construction contract, the amount of six hundred fifty three thousand, nine hundred and twenty one dollars and eight cents to Tony Bell Tramo and Sons, Inc., for project number twenty three dash zero five zero, Street Improvements, West Eleventh Street, setting forth ninety eight thousand, eighty dollars and twenty cents for contingencies and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. Item M two, a resolution awarding construction contract, the amount of four hundred sixty seven thousand, five hundred and eighty one dollars and forty five cents to Pyramid Construction, Inc., for project number twenty three dash zero zero eight, Street Improvements, Cheyenne Avenue, sitting for nine thousand, excuse me, ninety three thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty nine cents for contingencies and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. Item M three, a resolution authorizing payment in the amount of sixty five thousand dollars from Project CI twenty one thirteen, American Rescue Plan Act, for a government project to renovate the Headwaters Fountain Water Circulation System, as authorized by Section six or three, Print C, Print one, Print C of the American Rescue Plan Act and U.S. Treasury Final Rule thirty one CFR thirty five dot six. Item M four, resolution authorizing the transfer of forty thousand, one hundred and eight dollars from Elmwood Golf Course Enterprise Capital Project EW twenty three oh four Elmwood Golf Course Parking Lot Repairs into EW twenty three oh three Elmwood Golf Course Irrigation Pump Station Replacement. Item M five, a resolution approving amendment number four to the Agreement for Professional Consulting Services between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and Short Elliott Hendrickson, Inc., in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighty five dollars for project number twenty one dash zero seven five Dylan and Eagle Ridge Roundabout and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. Item M six, a resolution approving amendment number five, the Agreement for Professional Consulting Services between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and Short Elliott Henderson, Inc., in the amount of twenty two thousand, thirty one dollars for twenty one dash zero seven five Dylan Eagle Ridge Roundabout and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. Item M seven, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a revocable permit to Casa Pueblo, Colorado Nonprofit Corporation for the use of the right of way adjacent to one S of Inquency Avenue for the purposes of installing awnings. N ordinances for presentation, item N one, an ordinance approving an agreement for professional engineering services, the amount of three hundred thousand dollars between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and Brennan Cadwell, Inc., for consulting engineering services with respect to the Stockyard Road sixty and sixty six inch pipe CIPP rehabilitation design and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Item N two, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and Financial Consulting Solutions Group, Inc., DBA FCS Group to provide utility rate consulting services for the Pueblo wastewater department and naming said company as the rate consultant of record. Item N three, an ordinance approving a public art donation agreement between Tia Monson and the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation relating to the donation of artwork for public enjoyment as part of the Pueblo History and Art Walk Project and authorizing the execution thereof by the mayor. Item N four, an ordinance amending zoning restrictions to rezone two thousand one, two thousand five, two thousand nine Oakland Avenue lots one through three, block one CFNI Corporation subdivision from R two, single-family residential and O one neighborhood office to R five, multiple residential and office zone district. Item N five, an ordinance amending zoning restrictions to rezone twenty seven sixteen Thornberry Lane, Lot four, Block four, South Prairie subdivision, second filing from B three Highway and Artorial Business District to I two, light industrial district. Item N seven, an ordinance amending sections eleven dash one dash four oh one and eleven dash one dash four oh seven of the Pueblo Municipal Code to add a mandatory minimum jail sentence for those convicted thereof, where the value of the property stolen is three hundred dollars or more and to amend Section one dash two dash one of the Pueblo Municipal Code to add a mandatory minimum jail sentence for those convicted as habitual offenders, having violated Section eleven dash one dash four oh one or eleven dash one dash four oh seven of the code. Item N eight, an ordinance approving and authorizing the city to sell and assign certain liens encumbered real property pursuant to Title seven, Chapter nine of the Pueblo Municipal Code and authorizing the mayor to execute assignments of liens. Item N nine, an ordinance fixing the monthly salaries of the members and president of the city council at fourteen hundred dollars and eighteen hundred dollars respectively. Item N ten, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a subrecipient agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and the Southern Colorado Harm Reduction Association, a Colorado nonprofit corporation, as authorized by Section six or three of the American Rescue Plan Act and U.S. Treasury Final Rule thirty one CFR thirty five dot six and authorizing the payment of nine hundred seventy five thousand dollars from project number CI twenty one thirteen, American Rescue Plan Act for purposes thereof.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the all resolutions set forth in the consent agenda, pass the ordinances of the consent agenda, setting the public hearings for and order the ordinances to be published by title. We don't have a date. There's usually a date in there.
Apologies, the date would be for April tenth.
Set the public hearings for April tenth, twenty twenty three.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Call for the vote. Passes six zero.
Key resolutions, there are none. Our ordinance is final presentation, item R one, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a subrecipient agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and the Pueblo City County Health Department, a division of the State of Colorado, and authorizing the payment of fifty five thousand dollars from fund number two two six opioid abatement settlement for purposes thereof. Introduced March thirteenth, twenty twenty three by Councilor Larry Tencio.
May we have a staff report?
I believe we may have represented from the health department on Zoom. Shiloh Dennison?
Good evening. This is Shiloh Dennison. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you so much for allowing me to join you via Zoom this evening. It's a pleasure to be able to be here and speak on behalf of the Substance Use Response Ecosystem, or SHURE. It is a group that was formed in two thousand and seventeen with experts across really the entire spectrum of substance use response within the community to really come together on a monthly basis and coordinate, learn together, and ultimately problem solve and try to work through this tremendous problem that we do have around substance use. In two thousand and two, the SHURE group came together to create a countywide substance use plan that really outlines evidence-based strategies that we can use and address the substance use problem within Pueblo County. The plan does align with the five priority areas that are outlined in the opioid settlement fund strategies. So those five areas are definitely have evidence-based strategies underneath that. So the funds that are before you this evening will be used to help the health department continue to facilitate the SHURE coalition with coming together to continue to learn and collaborate and solve problems and to implement the plan as outlined. You do have a handout in front of you this evening that lists the five strategies and the prioritized approaches underneath each of those five areas. And also a list of the Substance Use Response ecosystem members, which is, there's a great group of people that comes together every single month. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, do I have a motion to approve? Do you have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? Councilor Flores?
Yes, under this agreement, there's a section dealing with the appointment of a city representative designated by the city mayor. Has that person been selected? Are you waiting for this?
Uh, yes, that person is me.
It's you. Okay, I just was curious. Thank you.
Thanks. And Shiloh, is this money going for towards a salary of somebody that's going to be doing all this work, or what exactly is it going for?
Yeah, great question. So yes, it will go towards salary to be able to support the facilitator who actually coordinates with all the partners, brings them together, does outreach to be able to ensure we're implementing the plan, tracks implementation of that. It will cover a little bit of my time to help support with that as well, and then some supplies.
And how long is that position for? So
This will be for a year.
Yes, this will cover a year. The county has put in additional funds for three months that will last them through May, and so then we will start funding them for June for one year.
Any other questions, Councilor Flores?
Does this follow the same example that we had a couple of weeks ago where we will continue getting fifty five thousand for the next nineteen years?
That is an option. We so so this is part of the opioid settlement funds that the city has opted into receiving personally. And there's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year that we'll be getting for the next nineteen years. This is coming from the initial two hundred thousand dollars that was was given to the city.
So that's all part of the Attorney General settlement.
Yes, this is all, that is where this funding is coming from. So the city will have the option to to use that funding to possibly continue supporting Shore with that funding or not. It will be at the discretion of additional mayors and city council.
Okay, anything else? Okay, call for the vote. Passes six zero.
Item R two, ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign an amendment to a subrecipient agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and Posada, Inc., a Colorado nonprofit corporation, as authorized by Section six or three of the American Rescue Plan Act and U.S. Treasury Final Rule thirty one CFR thirty five dot six and authorizing the payment of an additional fifty thousand dollars from project number CI twenty one thirteen, American Rescue Plan Act for purposes thereof. Introduced March thirteenth, twenty twenty three by Councilor Larry Tencio.
May we have a staff report?
Good evening, President Graham, members of council. Following or during the February twenty sixth work session, council requested that an ordinance be brought forward to increase the agreement between the City of Pueblo and Posada to assist the Skyview apartment evacuees to increase the contract to an additional fifty fifty thousand dollars to a total of one hundred thousand dollars and allow up to fifteen percent of the funds to be used for administration. The agreement has been modified such that that payments will be processed on a reimbursement basis only and that the fifteen percent of the administrative funds is eligible to the funds expended, not to the hundred thousand. So if a certain amount is expended, fifteen percent of that will be allowed for administration. To date, the Posada has assisted twenty families for the Skyview apartments, and they have encumbered thirty six thousand dollars. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Sliding down, Mr. Dichenzo.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear, friend, that the testimony you shall give before the public city councils, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
So is this the fifty thousand dollars that was meant to repair a boiler at a Posada place? No, then I guess I don't have any objections. That that should have been taken care of and brought forward only if the city owned the Posada owned the building or the city owned the building. So I have no objection. Thank you.
Sir, anybody else wanting to speak in favor against this ordinance? Okay, do I have a motion to approve? You have a second? Any discussion? Call for the votes. Passes four two.
Item R three, ordinance approving and adopting a substantial amendment to the City of Pueblo's fiscal year twenty twenty one action plan incorporating the Home Investment Partnership, American Rescue Plan, Home ARP Act funds allocated to the Pueblo Consortium and authorizing the mayor to execute and submit the substantial agreement together with all required and necessary certifications, assurances, and documentation to the U.S. Department of Housing Department of Housing and Urban Development, introduced March thirteenth, twenty twenty three by Councilor Larry Tencio.
May we have a staff report?
Yes, this ordinance amends our twenty twenty one annual action plan to accept the Home ARP grant allocation plan in the sum of three million, ninety thousand, nine hundred and twenty five dollars. The Home ARP grant is designed to assist homeless individuals, individuals at risk of homelessness, families and individuals fleeing domestic violence or human trafficking. And I'll to further assist families whose housing stability is the most at risk. Through a citizen's participation process, the allocation plan was developed to fund two million dollars worth of housing construction, four hundred and seventy two thousand dollars worth of client assistance, hundred and fifty four thousand worth of nonprofit administrative assistance, and the balance fifteen percent of the grant, four hundred and sixty fifty three thousand dollars for planning and administration. The the city undertook two public meetings and seven stakeholder sessions and presented twice to work session, twice a work session about this grant, and that concludes our report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Passes five one.
Item R four, an ordinance approving amendment number one, fixed base operator ground lease and operating agreement by and between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, Traveler Services, Inc., and Freeman Holdings of Colorado LLC, DBA Freeman Jet Center, Pueblo, relating to the assignment of fuel tank rights and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Introduced March thirteenth, twenty twenty three by Councilor Larry Tencio.
And we have a staff report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam President, councilors. This ordinance approves an amendment to the lease agreement for Freeman Jet Center to assume the rights to use a city-owned fuel storage tank previously used by Travel Air Services. Travel Air is no longer a fuel provider, so Freeman will take over the tank for their operation. This concludes my report. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, have a motion to approve?
I moved to approve.
You have a second? Any discussion? Call for the vote. Passes six zero.
Item R five, an ordinance to assess the cost of demolition and remove danger removal of dangerous buildings upon the land located at sixteen oh eight Wabash Avenue, introduced March thirteenth, twenty twenty three by Councilor Larry Tencio.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, the ordinance before you is an ordinance to assess the demolition costs at the property of sixteen oh eight Wabash as discussed previously in the hearing. I will take any questions you have at this time.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, do I have a motion to approve? You have a second? Any discussion? Councilor Martinez?
Andrew, so I guess going off of the earlier questions, in this process, when this has happened before, and the basically like the lien goes back to the property owner, like what happens to those properties?
So the properties remain until the city does something with the lien. The lien remains on the property, but it remains under the property owner's ownership. So that doesn't necessarily change as a result of the assessment of the lien. This this process is really about the, this is the methodology under which the city can recover the costs associated with the demo, or at least a portion thereof. But it does not necessarily lead to city ownership. There are other methods or vehicles the city can follow to to do that.
Yeah, I understand that and how it's like making us whole. I guess I was just curious about the properties in the past that have done this process.
So since I have been here, we've done several other properties that had been assessed in the past or that have been demolished in the past that had not yet been assessed. So we closed out a few of those as well. In general, this is, since this code was adopted, this is the process that we go through. There may be cases where my recommendation might be different in how we assess based on changes in ownership that have occurred over the time or the the length of time since the demolitions happened, those kinds of things. There might be circumstances I bring to you as part of that demolition report. But in this case, or in these two cases, and this one in particular, we're talking about right now. The ownership of the property has not changed. The the costs were assessed against the property. They were they were well documented. I I again recommend, I guess, that this that this I I again recommend, I guess, that this that this be assessed.
Any other questions? Counselor Tencio?
Kind of an answer to your question is that piece of property will lay vacant forever because the property owner can't sell it because there's a lien on it. And somebody's not going to buy that piece of property if there's a forty thousand thirty thousand dollar lien on it when the property itself is only worth six or seven. So we're gonna have to find a mechanism by which we eat the lien, the proper demolition costs, try to acquire the property, and then incented by somebody to build on the property owner itself, or somebody else isn't going to pay thirty forty fifty thousand dollars for a piece of vacant property that's only worth six, seven, or eight, ten.
If I could add on to that, to to your point, as far as how do how do we take it from here, right? I think it's the essence of your question. One of the things that has come up on on other properties, you know, potential buyers or interested parties have approached us on, you know, what is the city going to do with these properties? Again, our intent here is to put these properties back to highest invest use and to see that through. And one of the ways to do that is to potentially enter into agreements with investors whereby they may commit to redeveloping that property within a certain timeline. There there are a number of options on the table, but ultimately it would result in a discussion about the lien, whether it's settled, whether it's released, whether there are other options on the table. So it's going to be a case by case basis.
Counselor Flores?
Yeah, to me, this is an obligation that we have as a city. It's a safety issue and an attractive nuisance to children. They have that that building in that shape. Right. Even if the city loses money, we have solved an environmental and health issue. Oh, yeah, that's how I look at it.
We certainly made the community more livable by having that lot. It's unfortunate that it sits vacant, but there are still opportunities, I think, to take care of that.
Yeah, Mr. Is there a more aggressive way you go after the owner of these properties? Like, say, they live in a house, you know, in a really nice neighborhood that's got tons of equity in it. And their little house in the blighted, you know, area of the neighborhood. Can't you attach that lien to any of their property or only just that particular property?
Well, you can if we obtain a judgment. So if you obtain a judgment lien, you record it in Pueblo County, and it applies to all property owned by the defendant in the lawsuit.
Is there a reason why we don't do that if we don't obtain the the judgment?
We we could do that, but this owner, I think, is judgment meaning, as Councilman Atencio said, just putting the lien on the property doesn't do much except it gives us the opportunity to foreclose on that lien and eventually obtain title. So most of these owners are judgment proof.
Yeah, also, that's an extreme way of doing it. That that judgment lien, it generally isn't done because property rights, people have right to properties and by government going in and trying to take these properties away by judgment liens and stuff, it's just it it just hasn't been done a whole lot. It's very rare that it's that it's done. And we have to be careful when we do things like that. And that's a conundrum, where is it? What happens after we put a lien like that on there?
If I can to the, there's a.
And maybe there's someone who has several properties and has the means to really take care of it, but they're just going to sit there and let it happen so the taxpayers can pick up the bill. And I'd see at that point is, you know, are we not aggressive enough in our collecting practices?
Counselor Warner, did you have something?
Well, I was just going to say that it's just a circular conversation as you are observing tonight. We've we've had this conversation over and over and over, and it is a matter of the city just being willing to foreclose on those liens so that we own the property and we can sell the land. Because once you get the land reestablished, you're going to be collecting more taxes off that land once once it's reestablished. But I do agree that 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 is a good thing to look at because the owner of the property on Eighth Street owns several properties in town, so that would be a good option as well. And and so so why are they non-judgment liens?
I I have not researched this property. I think the general rule is that the owners are out of state. They're children of people who passed away, and they let the.
Oh, I don't mean, I'm I'm sorry. I don't mean this top. I just mean in general, not specifically this.
I'd be happy, yeah. If if we find an owner who we think we can collect from, our options are not only to put a an abatement lien or a demolition lien on the property, but also sue the owner in court so that that owner can be personally liable. If we get a judgment, we can record a lien in Pueblo County, and we can take that judgment and record it in any of the sixty four counties of Colorado.
So say on on the the one that's on Eighth Street, that property owner owns several other properties in the city. So that would be an option with that particular one?
Absolutely.
So could we?
All these remedies are cumulative, so.
Right.
You know.
There's probably, there's probably, there's probably a few that have sat there with the assessment on their property for for years and years that own other pieces of property in town.
Correct.
So I think I think, how can we, do we need an ordinance to do that or? And if so, can we bring that forward?
Yeah, an ordinance that.
Well, I I think we need to do a report on the owner and see what other properties he or she owns in the city.
Yeah, because having a hazardous property hazardous waste is is against the law. It's not like we can come and take chemicals and throw them on our front, you know, in our front yard and not be breaking the law. Or if there isn't breaking the law, we should be breaking the law. And we there, that's what ordinances do. They put things in place, regulations and place. Do we need to put something like that in place that forces these owners to take responsibility?
Correct.
When you made the statement that judgment proof, you meant the symbolic thing of you can't take blood out of a turnip. In other words, the judgment proof is that you cannot go after suing someone that has no assets to to recover.
Yeah, thank you.
That's what you meant.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. That's what I meant.
It can't be every case, though, that we come across, right? I mean, it has to be a case by case basis.
Exactly.
Yeah, because like Counselor Warner said, property owner on age owns several properties.
Big properties.
Yes.
Okay, cool. So can we bring that forward?
I guess what we're asking is how how do we get, do we need an ordinance for that? That's the new procedure or?
Department of Housing is doing that kind of work. And if if I can, there's a, I believe in the in chapter nine of the code where it talks about the process for assessing liens, we can do one of two things. One of them is to assess or three things. One of them is to assess the property, which is what this is written up as. One is to assess against the owner or to do both. So there are options to do that. Right now, the ordinance is written up as an as a assessment against the property.
Yeah.
So if if we'd like to amend that, we can discuss how to handle the ordinance to do that.
So would we have to turn that assessment into a lien? Into a tax lien?
Not a tax lien. This is an assessment against the property. So this is the, this is, we're talking about the two things, right? You can either assess the property owner or the property or both. And in this case, it's written up in a way that assesses the property.
Right, so.
So if you want to assess against the owner and try to get that judgment.
Right, exactly.
That's that might be the other methodology in the in the code.
Right, 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 right. So can we bring that forward?
Yeah, I'd be happy to look into it. Look into both of these.
Yeah, cool.
Keep in mind that some of the ownership is in the name of a limited liability company or corporation. That complicates our enforcement.
I get it, yeah.
Well, we should at least do.
That circular conversation again.
Yeah, I mean, we we need to do our due diligence and find out. We can't just continue to take on the costs. It's not fair to the taxpayers that we take on the costs of other people's irresponsibility. I mean, that's one of the biggest things going on in the city right now. Taxpayers are taking on the cost of everyone's irresponsibility in every way, shape, and form, whether that be criminal, whatever it is, and they're they're really, really tired of it.
I I agree, and I will report back to you on these two properties.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Let's vote.
So Dan, procedurally, do we need to recommend tabling or or?
I I recommend that we we record the demolition lien. That's one of our options. We have, as as Counselor Warner said, we can convert this into a tax lien. That's the second option. Third option is to sue the owner directly in court for the amount of the demolition costs. So.
So we can.
I agree. I think the city should exercise all options that are reasonable.
One more. So so in essence, we could do the same thing that we're doing with the properties we we were talking about earlier with the abatement lien and the abatement abatement liens and also the vacant property registry. So if you if you made those tax liens, the city could sell those for less money.
Well, we have no control over the tax lien. Those are sold by the county treasurer.
Oh, okay. So you can't, the city can't lower those? Should say like ten grand so that somebody would buy a lot?
Well, it's, yeah, we're always looking at people who want to build.
Sure. So rather than the lien being four hundred thousand dollars on, well, that's a larger property, but anyway, for example, the lien of four hundred thousand, we could drop that lien down to fifty thousand so that the lot gets purchased.
Yeah, I I think, given what Counselor Atencio said, we we'd like it to be an owner occupied property. We would certainly entertain any.
With those sideboards, because another issue with just a vacant property, it just ends up with more more liens, more abatement liens. So it just ends up being not as dangerous, but another eyesore for sure.
All right, good. I'm done. Sorry, I'll shut up. Okay, call for the vote. Passes six zero.
Item R six, an ordinance to assess the cost of demolition and removal of dangerous buildings upon land located at eleven oh three East Eighth Street. Introduced March thirteenth, twenty twenty three by Councilor Larry Tencio.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, the ordinance before you will assess the cost of demolition and removal of the or the costs incurred to demolish and remove dangerous buildings on the land located at eleven oh three East Eighth Street as per the hearing we had earlier this evening. I'll take any questions you have at this time.
Yeah, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
I'll remind you, you're under oath.
So my question is about the sale of of the liens on those fifteen other properties and this property. And so what I think I heard was they're sold at auction and not and but I heard Larry talking about, we're going to get this money back. Why would somebody buy the property? But I think if you sell at auction, the price can get dropped way low. I, in fact, did buy a tax lien where the price was dropped extremely low and made the property worthwhile. So we shouldn't be thinking that we're going to get all this money back by putting liens on things. But there is a way to get some of the money back, which I think has been alluded to. That's all I have to say, but I am in favor of passing it so we can all go home.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Any discussion? Call for the vote. Passes six zero.
Item R seven, an ordinance amending ordinance number one zero three seven three to update the assigned project number from PL twenty two oh three to PL twenty three oh one. Introduced March thirteenth, twenty twenty three by Councilor Larry Tencio.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, the ordinance before you will simply amend a project number that was assigned as part of ordinance number one zero three seven three. This is a project to to install work associated with the Pueblo History and Art Walk. It's it's part of a contract that we have with the Pueblo Department of Public Health and Environment. At the time that the project was created, it was the very end of twenty twenty two, and by the time the ordinance passed, it was twenty twenty three. So a new project number was assigned. This just cleans up that that administrative oversight. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
Yeah, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, do I have a motion to approve? You have a second? Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Please don't.
Passes six zero.
Item R eight, an ordinance approving a public art donation agreement between Reed Miller and the city of Pueblo Colorado Municipal Corporation relating to the donation of artwork for public enjoyment as part of the Pueblo History and Art Walk project and authorizing execution thereof by the mayor. Introduced March thirteenth, twenty twenty three by Councilor Larry Tencio.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, the ordinance before you will approve a public art donation agreement between the city and Reed Miller, an our local artist. This is the first of several public art donation agreements that we've seen in the coming weeks. Most of them related to the public, to the Pueblo Art and History Walk, but a few other unrelated ones as well. In this particular case, Mr. Reed has created a Pueblo sail sculpture that he will be donating to the city. He is responsible for maintenance for the first two years after it goes in. It's intended to be installed in the Clark Street right away at the intersection of Clark Street and the levee. I'll take any questions you have about the project.
Yeah, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, do I have a motion to approve? You have a second? Any discussion?
So this particular piece is a is a metal sculpture that's designed to look like sails on a sailboat, so it's got a sail mast and two sails with cutout metal pieces in it. I will, I will send you a picture of the concept, but it's still in fabrication right now. Last I saw were a bunch of pieces and parts ready to be put together. But there's a, there's a concept sketch that he had prepared. I'll I'll see if I can send that to you.
Okay. I believe there's going to be a whole website about it and QR codes and and everything too, so. Because it's not just this one, it's going to be a series.
So the Pueblo Art and History Walk will be a curated walk with, you can, you can see it on your phone. You'll be able to scan QR codes and and identify the piece that you're looking at. It's public and private property, but the routes go basically from the Harp area all the way south down as far as down near due drop off of Mesa. So there's several loops. One of them's about a five mile loop, but there are shorter ones as well, so. Nothing symbolic, simply, simply a sailboat. Pueblo Sails is the title.
Okay, call for the vote. Okay, call for the vote. Pass a six-zero.
Item R9, an ordinance approving a deferred improvements agreement between Mark Dickkopf and the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, relating to construction of public improvements incidental to arrange, rearrangement of property boundaries, and authorizing execution thereof by the mayor, introduced March 13th, 2023 by Counselor Larry Atencio.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, the ordinance before you will approve a deferred improvements agreement related to a property rearrangement of a property owner up in Walking Stick Vista and subdivision of the north end of town. The gentleman has purchased two, has purchased a lot next to the lot where his primary residence is, is combining those lots into one. Normally, the city requires that sidewalks be completed, and so this deferred improvement agreement requires him to finish the sidewalk around the entire length of properties to make sure that that's continuous for the neighborhood. That concludes my report. I'll take any questions you have.
Yeah, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none. Anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none. Do I have a motion to approve? Any discussion? Call for the vote. Pass a six-zero.
Item R10, ordinance approving an agreement to accept property and release claims from the City of Pueblo and the Pueblo West Fire Department relating to 12006 Freightliner hazmat apparatus, introduced March 13th, 2023 by Counselor Larry Atencio.
And we have a staff report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. This is an agreement for us to accept a freightliner from Pueblo West, as is, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none. Anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none. Do I have a motion to approve? Do you have a second? Any discussion?
It does what? No, and it's not a statue. It doesn't represent anything. No. Pretty simple.
Okay, call for the vote. Pass a six-zero.
Item R11, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a lease between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, and Professional Bull Riders LLC, a Delaware limited liability company for storage space located at 317 North Main Street, Pueblo, Colorado 181003, introduced March 13th, 2023 by Counselor Larry Atencio.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, PBR has been leasing 2,400 square feet in the Pope Block Building since 2016. The city is grateful for the rental income. Their lease expires on March 31st of this year. This ordinance approves a new lease agreement for three years. The rent goes up 3% each year. They also have the option of continuing the lease for two additional years, subject to the 3% increase, and that is staff's report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none. Anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? I knew you were waiting for something.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Public City Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name for the record. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
There we go. I get it. Okay, my favorite subject, the city's big elephant. 317 Main Street. The Pope Building. It's a loser for the city, and it's been there ever, since day one, since they got it from, believe it or not, from Petco Foundation. Not PDF, or not Petco, but Petco Foundation. That's how they got it. Okay. Right now, I can tell you, okay, there's people that are leasing presently in the building is United Private Networks. They're the big anchor in that building. Why? Because they're the people that own the fiber optics control center. Okay? That's why it's sort of an anchor. Because I've talked to the mayor, and I've talked to Laura also, about the fact that we should sell, get rid of that building, or else. Rather than considering Wells Fargo, we ought to maybe move in some of the city departments into that building. Make it worthwhile. But as a city-owned building, a government-owned building, we should not be competing with private enterprise for anything, when a private enterprise can take care of it. And that goes along with, and I'm going to say the other, you know, the other, we've got, of course, PBR, which is this one, okay? PBR has all kinds of room over there in their own building. Plus, there's private buildings. Now, there's certain requirements that they have, okay, that they need to have computer power backup. Why, I'm not sure, other than the fact that they need, want to keep it temperature-controlled, because they've got films and videotapes and stuff like that in there. It's the city that takes care of that stuff. Okay, so the whole thing is, all right? And it, and, and they got 2,400 square feet. That's what, what they have. Now, they also have listed as a lease, ICor. ICor at least had at least 25,000 square feet, but they don't pay anything. Zero lease, zero lease, right there on the chart. The city's got 1,200 feet. Of course, they don't pay anything either. And then they got USA Boxing in there. USA Boxing. 7,400 square feet. And believe it or not, they only charge USA Boxing for that large space $1.95 a square foot. Wow. What a deal. When you talk about competing with private enterprise, nobody in the world outside of the city can ever afford to lease anything at that low a price. That's our brains working at the city. $1.95 a square foot. Now, as I say, this whole lease agreement should not be in the format of a lease to start with, because of the fact that we should, in fact, still sell that building or utilize it. That means we should not be leasing it and have an anchor. I can tell you, reading that lease agreement, I know who, you know, had the best attorneys. Fincher didn't. Because there's the terms and conditions that, you know, hey, we can't terminate that lease. Period. It says. Unless we really screw up. Period. So when they go into a lease agreement, hey, that's three years. Period.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Now, what I'm saying is that this lease agreement, hey, wait a minute, let me finish, because this is important. The lease agreement, terms and conditions should be made into a rental agreement where the same terms and conditions go on a month-to-month basis. So if the city ever gets the opportunity to either sell or utilize that building, they will have the opportunity to do that. With this lease agreement, they will not, okay? And it's really a sad situation that we put ourselves in, I think.
Freeman, is there anybody else wishing to speak against this ordinance? Do I have a motion to approve? Any discussion? Counselor Warner?
Um, this doesn't really have anything to do with, with this particular ordinance, but, uh, you know, we're, we're just kind of stuck with this building. Is there, is there any way maybe we could turn that into housing for new police officers, where they could stay there, say, for no cost for a couple of years? Uh, with, I mean, if we're looking at trying to get new recruits into our city, if they possibly live there two years, there'd be a stipulation that they'd have to purchase property within the city, or pay a certain amount back? Well, we've got a lot of other money we've spent on things that aren't helping our city, so.
I'm going back to this. Shouldn't, if we are considering it for ourselves, or selling it, shouldn't we just start phasing these leases out into month-to-month agreements, so that we are able to terminate them if we do have the opportunity to sell? Because we've talked about this before. We say, oh, well, we don't sell because we've got these lease agreements in place, so we don't do, and nobody's interested in it with tenants. And the leases aren't really worth much. You know, I'm, I mean, you think as a council, we should start taking these leases as they come due, and start turning them into rental agreements?
Mr. Kogosik?
The Pope Block Building has been a problem for the city. At one time, we hired a realtor to list it, and we didn't get any satisfactory offers. We then passed an RFP with no minimum bid. Were interested in all offers on the building, and none came in. What we're trying to do now is help reduce the city's subsidy of the building with income, both rental income and for CAM fees. So they have to pay their portion of, of maintenance and insurance, and that is separately assessed on each tenant. So it's, it's a matter of just trying to cut our losses, basically. That building is wired and plumbed for office space. Turning it into residential units would require a substantial amount of money. And so
Well.
We've been, we've been fighting this battle at least 10 years since I've been city attorney.
You know, I, I remember from previous discussions that the lease agreements in place are not desirable for those wanting to purchase, and, because it hinders them for what they want to do with the building. So my question here to council is, maybe we should just let these continue on with the terms of a monthly agreement, instead of continuing these leases that are going to just, you know, it's just too much to put on a buyer.
We have unfavorable leases on the building.
Yes.
Worst one is the ICor lease. The ICor lease was a long-term lease entered into by the Petco Foundation when they owned the building, with the thought that this would promote economic development. It's a long-term lease. They have no interest in leaving the building.
It's upwind, because it's like 2025 or something, right? It's coming close.
I'd have to check it.
Yeah, it's, I know it's-
I think that's right.
Coming close.
I think that's right.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. Let's start phasing them out, so that we can, how much do, um, you know, we, we, we're still paying out of our pocket on that deal anyways. But in order to start making this more marketable, this building, we should really consider just phasing out these leases. Because PBR is not going to pick up and move all their stuff here anyways. As long as, you know, as long as they're just paying whatever the agreed amount in the rental agreement is the same as the lease agreement, they'll probably stick around until they have-
Mr. Hayes, did you have something to add? 2028? Counselor? Counselor Flores?
Yeah, the building's an albatross, because there's no parking. You have, you have a huge, huge building there with no parking, and that building is effectively zeroed out as far as depreciation. So, and, and whatever money we do get, it offsets some of our subsidy, because I think our subsidy is probably half a million a year, isn't it?
Yeah, just maintenance.
I, I don't know if you want a history lesson, but this goes back to Quomed.
Yes.
Quomed gave us the building as part of the, gave the Petco Foundation the building as part of a settlement, and they also set aside $3 million to be used for economic development purposes in the Pope Block Building. When that 3 million was spent, the Petco Foundation came to the city and said, okay, we want you to pay now. Okay? And Sam Azad said, no, you have to give us the building. We're not going to make subsidy payments on a building that we don't own. So that is the history of this building.
Oh, it seems like we have broader discussion in the near future about the Pope Block. Okay.
The Pope Block PDF, as, as Mr. Freeman said, likes the space, because it's refrigerated, and it has a backup generator. And all of their tapes and audio and visual video is stored there. Staff recommends that we approve this lease. If you want, if the vote isn't there, that we can go back and say it's a month-to-month. It's a three-year lease. It ends in March of 2026.
Okay. A call for the vote. Passes four-two. Okay, there's no other business, and this will conclude our meeting tonight at 10:01.